Good evening. The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board Meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, November 13th, 2018. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry? Okay, I'd like everyone just to take a moment and just think of our residents that are ill and that are being hospitalized. Some are very critical. Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call.
Council Authority Member Leanne Jones-Cruz. Here. Council Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Two Cindy Fosse. Here. Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. There will be no changes to the agenda. Any council or authority member or staff who has direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Say and none, we'll go on to Item 1.1, Presentations, Report on 2018 Cheese and Wine Festival.
Sorry. Sue Patrick, our Director of Parks and Rec, and Chris Ricky, our Contractor, are going to give the report this evening. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, we wanted to do this pretty soon after the festival, just while it's fresh in our minds on how the festival went this year. So Chris Ricky will give the presentation, and we'll be going out to bid as we had planned because this is the fifth year. So we'll kick that off right away and come back to council with some options for that in the near future. So here's Chris Ricky.
Thanks, Sue. Chris Ricky with Chris Ricky Presents. Excited to talk about this year's Cheese and Wine Festival. It's another good year. We added a whole bunch of new activities. We brought in the Sip and Paint, which is an opportunity to paint and drink fine wine. We brought the French Wine Cafe that brought real wines from France so people could experience wine from a new neighborhood. We also brought this area called The Yard, which had huge Uno and large Connect Four along with Cornhole. It was busy all day long. And then we also moved the stage that was normally in the fountain area out to Third and Topeka, and that increased traffic for the vendors there. And then we added DJs in the river area, the River Park that we have across the street here. So that worked out well also. We got some suggestions based on this year's experience. One of the suggestions was adding a car show to the event. We've had a car show at this event before. It didn't do very well, so I don't know if we'd want to do that in the future. Vendor placements is always a challenge. We had a few vendors complaining about where they were placed. We worked hard to try to do the right placements. Every year there's questions about that, but that's definitely an area that we should look at. Another suggestion was we should have more arts and crafts vendors. We do have a specific area for arts and crafts vendors that's been working very well over the last couple of years that includes reduced fees for those vendors to make it easier for them to participate. We expect that area, if we were to continue, to grow. And I think overall, we need to talk about the evolution of Cheese and Wine, which is it needs to differentiate itself and continue to differentiate itself from the other community festivals in the area. You know, what we don't want is a festival that looks just like the Chocolate Festival or just like the Almond Blossom Festival. You know, we want something that has a unique feel for Riverbank, and I think that's something we need to push for in the future, continue to push for. Sponsorships did quite well this year. We added some new sponsors that we're real proud of, Save Mart, F&amp;M, Sahali Nuts, and LHR Insurance. Revenue was up this year significantly, so that's fantastic. We're excited about that and would hope to build on that in the future. The wine tasting area went really well. We finally got the marketing mix, I think, right where we want it. It's a good mix of radio, social media, and of course, the Monestobee. We had best ticket sales we've ever had. We've made a decision to do a single tasting area. We started that decision when we took the event over. It's resulted in massive decreases in overintoxication, which increases your safety. And that's the most important thing when you're producing an event, is to make sure that the public is safe, and our decisions on alcohol management have made sure that that's happened. Overall, the quality of the cheese, the wine, the food has improved every year, but this year especially with Save Mart coming in and doing food sampling, Sahali Nuts having all their different combinations of nuts there, and then we had a Creamery from Santa Rosa come in and let people try all their fine goat cheeses. Wine tasting revenue, as you can see, has been growing over the last three years, and I think that reflects the increases in quality that we've had. So we had our best year ever this year. So there's supposed to be a soundtrack for this, but it's not coming through. But this is video from this year's event. One of our areas that we're not as happy with is our vendor income. It's down this year significantly from the previous two years. So we were wondering why that happened, so we did a survey of our vendors that we had. Almost 70% said the festival was very good. About 20% said it was okay, meaning they weren't real satisfied with their spot or, you know, some other complaint. And then about 12%, 13% said it was really slow. So overall, I'd say it actually went pretty well for the vendors that were there. Here's some pictures from the main part of the festival. We have our Hispanic Heritage Area, which has been extremely successful, our kids' area that worked out really well, and then on the bottom right, that's the cheese from Santa Rosa that came in. To the left, that's just some people at the festival. The bottom left is an arts and crafts vendor, and then on the right, that's the new sip and paint area. So why did our revenue go down with vendors? I think probably the biggest thing is that we have increased competition. We've had Modesto's Oktoberfest move on to the same day as our event. We had the Monestobee Harvest Festival now on our weekend. We also are competing against the Blooming Camp Harvest Festival, Oakdale Harvest Festival, and the Mesopotamian Food Festival. In addition, we're seeing a real difference in revenue opportunities for vendors at our events versus Bay Area events. My company produces Taco Fests, and we did a Taco Fest in Modesto. We did that event, and we sold 2,000 tickets at $10. I did the exact same event three months later in Concord. I sold 2,500 tickets at $15. Exact same event, 30% higher price, and more people came. So what vendors are telling us, the feedback we're getting, like, "Look, I can make more money if I go to the Bay Area." It's a reality. So it's something that, it's not an excuse, but it's something that we need to address. It's something we need to figure out a solution for, and it's something we need to be aware of and accept. In addition, we found that our Hispanic vendors were extremely successful. So we need to reach out to Hispanic vendors and make sure that we have vendors that target our Hispanic members of our community because they're a large part of this festival. We wanted to make sure that our costs were in line with the other festivals in our area. So I went through and checked festivals that were similar to ours. On the screen, it's kind of hard to read, but the top is, the yellow is Oakdale Chocolate Festival, the kind of purpley is Rip and Almond Blossom, and the red is us. And so this is the vendor cost comparison. The reason why Oakdale has four and not two is that they have different prices if you get your money in early or late, right? So if you're early to Oakdale and you don't sell beverages, they're a little bit less than us, about $25 less than us. But if you're selling like Coca-Cola with your hot dogs, it's an extra $100, so they're actually more. And if you turn in late, it's about $100 more if you're just doing food, or $200 more if you're doing it with beverage. Rip and Almond Blossom Festival is a little bit less than us. This trend also kind of continues on the trade and expo vendor spaces. We're all about the same. Oakdale's a little less, like 25 bucks less if you get your money in early, and about 25 bucks more if you get it in late, and the almond blossom's exactly the same. Again, though, we need to realize that we're facing increased competition. That may mean that we may want to consider a different strategy for pricing on our vendors. Overall, I'd say we did really well. Every metric that we have to gauge attendance, since it's a free event, we don't know exactly how many people came, but we do know that this was our highest-attended wine tasting event we've ever had. We also know that our ATM transactions increased, so we do know there were more people here. We know that the Hispanic area was a huge hit and had more people at it than we've ever had before. We also know that the kids' music area was a real success with families coming just specifically to see their kids play. And I think in the future, finding new activities similar, we really hit on something with that huge Uno and Cornhole and that Connect Four game, is like, we need free activities for kids to spend time, and if we do that, we're going to have, we're going to see longer stays and more families coming out to our event. Thanks a lot. That's what I got.
Any questions or comments? I believe that the last five years, we've done, had significant improvements throughout. I think you did a marvelous job this year. I saw more activities for families, and again, I was in Hispanic section a lot, and it seemed to be overwhelming success. I know that there's always conflict, there's always difficulties, but you seem to have worked through them, and we're going out with an RFP, and I hope you bid on it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
I'm having a hard time with that button tonight. I've just seen changes over the years that we've been doing this, and it's kind of interesting and fun to see the different changes and things that work and didn't work, and I really appreciate you and Sue making some of those changes to try to make everybody happy. I know it's kind of tough at times, so I appreciate that.
What we tried to do is just kind of keep what worked, and, you know, like, we try stuff, right? Like, we tried the car show, it didn't work. We tried doing kind of this Oktoberfest tent, that didn't work. But, you know, we did the kids' stage, and it worked great, so we kept it, right?
Yeah.
So we did the new stage at Third and Topeka, and it was fantastic, so we'll do it again. You know, so like, you just kind of, and Hispanic area was a great experiment that was, exceeded all my expectations. So you have to kind of, you have to keep trying stuff until you find stuff that works, you know?
I know the downtown businesses really appreciated having the booths in the center. It really opened up the sidewalks for them, and I know that that was a big deal for them, and they appreciated it and said stuff to me.
Yeah, well, listening to downtown businesses is critical, making sure they're successful. So I'm glad that, you know, Sue recommended that we do that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Public comment, no action can be taken at this time. Members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state laws, matter presented during public comment cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Are there any public comments tonight? Say and none, we'll move on to the consent calendar, consisting of Item 3A, Wave Reading, Item 3B, A Resolution to Approve Funding for the Repair of a Police Services Building Wall and Award the Bid to Begler Construction. Is there any comments on the consent calendar? Do I have any motion on the consent calendar?
I make the motion that we accept the consent calendar.
I second.
Well, motion approved, and a second on the consent calendar.
Council Authority Members Fosse.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones-Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing, First Reading by Title Only, An Introduction of a Proposed Ordinance Approving a Rezone of 1.1 Plus or Minus Acres at the Plan Development Located at the 7th and Sierra Streets, APN 312-015-032, a project known as Riverbank Commons.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Our Planning and Building Manager, John and Kenny, will be giving the report this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Okay, the project is a 14-lot gated community, which includes Lot A, and Lot A includes the streets, parking area, utilities, landscaping, and a small park. The project location is the white pin in the bright green area in the lower central portion of the map. You can see railroad tracks to the south and Patterson Road to the south, neighborhood all around it. Well, that didn't come out very well, but here's a copy of the tentative map. Lot A is the large lot in the middle that extends to 7th Street and to the alley, which also includes that little park area. And then you can see the 13 different housing lots on there. Now, this is the site plan. The site plan has a gate off of 7th Street there. There is stacking distance for a car off of 7th Street, waiting for the gate to open. There is the circular route within the subdivision itself that would have some parking in the very center of it. And then up at the top left-hand corner, that's the emergency vehicle access for the fire department. They will be the only ones using that exit that's onto the alley there, but they can also come in from 7th Street should they choose to do so. The plan was reviewed by Stanislaus Consolidated Fire, and they did verify that the turns within the subdivision itself will work for their fire trucks. I only put in one elevation, but there are several elevations of houses, and of course, you have the left and the right, and then some modifications of the trim and the houses to give you a really, you would have compatible houses, but they would have variation and some mixture of colors and decorations on the houses. It's a basic floor plan. The lower floor has a living space with two garage spaces, and then the upstairs would be the bedroom areas. What's different about this subdivision compared to some of our other subdivisions is since the lots are so small, well, first of all, they'll be attractive to couples or maybe people with small children or retired folks who don't want to do a lot of yard work. With a small front yard like these would have, you don't really have the driveway parking. So you do have the two spaces within the garage that will need to be utilized, as well as an assigned on-street parking for each home. Here's some of the color samples they proposed to use. It has some yellows and browns and beige colors with some accents. Since this is a PD, and they propose some amenities, some of the amenities would be some colored concrete within the project itself, maybe delineating the different crosswalks, entrances to the subdivision. Okay, I mentioned this was a planned development rezone. It's currently zone planned development, but because the proposed houses previously for this property, they were clustered and had a lot more common open area, where these are actual individual lots that will be sold to these folks. And so we've compared the, the first column is the different standards. The second column is what a typical R3 standard would be required, and then we have the final column there, which is the proposed PD standards. And as you can tell from your staff reports, there are at least nine items that are different from a regular R3 zone property. Lot width, lot depth, of course, the density is fine because they are proposing multifamily, and it was PD for multifamily before, but the front setback is changed, garage setback. So there are nine items where the developer is expected to provide some sort of amenities to the folks within the subdivision for giving them smaller lots and, you know, less open space around them. There are several general plan policies that apply to this project, including encouraging compact development. Gated projects, we usually kind of frown upon unless there's a certain reason or a certain type of subdivision, where in this one, with the smaller houses and maybe a tendency for couples and retired couples, hopefully the gated will give them a more sense of community within the subdivision themselves, itself. Let's see. The garage locations, they are attached to the house, actually part of it, smaller front setbacks, which we do allow to kind of change up the neighborhood, so it's not all cookie cutter. The project is not expected to have any significant effect on the environment. The site right now is just an open lot. There are no exotic trees or birds or bugs or anything like that on the property. It has been analyzed for SEQA several times through their different subdivision map processes. And I would be happy to answer any questions. The project developer is here tonight too, should you have any questions for him as well.
I have a, one is a concern, and the other one is a question. The emergency exit plan that will be used by first responders, what type of access is that? Is it like another gate? You said it'll only be used by first responders, right?
Correct. Both the front entrance on 7th and then the emergency vehicle access to the alley would have seven-foot-tall decorative wrought iron gates and NOX blocks. So the fire department would have complete access to the site.
Okay. And then a concern about the sewer lines from the new project connecting to the old sewer lines. So does the old sewer lines, do they have to be like, you know, uprooted and because you have more capacity from the newer project going in? So just concerned about it.
Well, the project itself will be putting in some new lines, but this project was routed to Public Works and the city engineer, and there were no concerns about the sewer and water lines that came up through that review. Thank you.
I've read, and I've heard comments, that parking is not sufficient. Do you see a problem with the parking?
Well, we did have people come speak at the Planning Commission that do have concerns about parking. They say that right now, that part of the street is impacted, that people use it. If, well, the-
I'm talking within the subdivision.
Oh, within the subdivision. Well, that will be made clear to the people looking at the property, that they only have those three spots. Hopefully, anybody who has teenage drivers or, you know, a large family, this wouldn't be the subdivision for them. But we have a similar subdivision near, it's the cottages, near Home Depot. It's the cottages near Home Depot, and I think there's only been minor problems with their parking there. We haven't had any issues with folks parking on the street, like near their gate or on... What street is that?
Squire Els.
Yes, Squire Els, thank you. No, it started with the Ns, it just wasn't coming. The one issue we did have is somebody bought a big SUV or a small RV over there and then realized they didn't have any place to park it. But other than that, we haven't had any complaints through code enforcement about an impact to the parking. As far as the parking on Seventh Street, you know, if it's already impacted outside the subdivision and folks inside want to park outside, then they'll probably have to park a street or two away because it's already accounted for by the existing neighborhood. But I would think that if you had a place inside the subdivision, you really wouldn't want your car parked out a couple blocks away. You'd want it inside, you know, where it's safe and near you to be used.
Donna, the other component we talked about today is that our code requires that each home maintain two spots. If you could speak to that a little.
Yes. Our code does require that you have two covered parking spaces, your garage spaces, and they have to be maintained as usable. For example, some of our houses in the city have three garages, but if somebody wants to convert one of those to a home occupation or a home cannabis grow, they have to keep the other two open. They cannot do all three or even two of the three. They can only do one. They have to keep two open. If somebody wants to convert their garage to additional living space, we require them to build a two-car garage to replace it. So these folks will just have to, you know, keep their garages free and usable, otherwise they won't have a place to park.
And you mentioned RV. There's no RV parking in there?
No, there is not.
Donna, my impression on reading it was that they were going to keep the spots in the garages just for parking, because it said if they didn't, there would be a problem.
There could definitely be a problem. If they start parking in like the red zones that we leave clear for fire lanes, but that's something that code enforcement could address.
Can the subdivision require that also with their rules?
Their CCNRs, yes.
Okay.
Any further before I open it up for a public hearing? This is a public hearing. People from the public wishing to comment on this? Seeing none, I close public hearing, bring it back for the council for recommendation and/or action.
Make a motion that we approve Item 5.1.
I second it.
A motion to approve the first reading and a second on Item 5.1.
Council members Fossey?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Item 5.2, first reading by title only, an introduction of a proposed ordinance amending Chapter 92, Fire Protection and Prevention of Title IX General Regulations by repealing this chapter in its entirety and replacing it with a new Chapter 92, Fire Protection and Prevention of the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to... Our city clerk, Annabelle, has done a lot of work on this, and she's actually going to give this report this evening. This was an item that council placed on its strategic planning during the last session, and Councilmember Campbell and Fossey served on a committee that met to kind of discuss how we would tackle what has become really an unmanageable problem with illegal fireworks in Riverbank. So Annabelle put in a lot of work after the committee met, taking those recommendations and not only crafting it into an ordinance, but also cleaning up a bunch of things from our current municipal code that was over two decades old or so, that gets us more in line with current regulations, so I'll hand it to her.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. So it's just as the city manager stated, we are proposing to add... There's going to be two sections for the fireworks. We have dangerous fireworks and we have safe and sane fireworks. We're going to add a code section to regulate, enforce, and penalize not only the discharge of these illegal fireworks within the city, but to include the possession, which is the key factor in this ordinance, of illegal fireworks. The second part will be for safe and sane fireworks, which are the legal fireworks, to update the code section, which hasn't been updated since 1996. And this will regulate, enforce, and penalize the sale and use of legal fireworks during times not allowed by setting the dates and times that fireworks may be sold and the dates and times and locations that legal fireworks may be discharged. So the first section will be fireworks regulations and enforcement. This code section authorizes the issuance of administrative citations and related administrative fines for the possession, use, storage, sale, and/or display, or the seizure of 25 pounds of less, and this will include the packaging of dangerous fireworks. And this is just an example of what 25 pounds of fireworks would be. So our dangerous fireworks are considered illegal. They're fireworks that are generally possessed and used solely by state-licensed display operators, and they're typically used for your municipal Fourth of July celebration. They generally fly and/or explode. And if you have any firework that lacks the state seal of the packaging, and that's the state seal, it is illegal. So we're going to get right into the gist of this whole ordinance, which will be the administrative fines. Section 9243A are for violations for the possession, use, storage, sale, and/or display of dangerous fireworks. And as you will see, we are proposing a first and second and third offense, and which would be 1,000, 2,000, and 3,000 respectively. And there would be a 30-day late payment charge, which would then take it to 1,250, 2,500, and 4,000. Section 9243B would be failure to obtain a block party permit, license, or approval from the city. And the ordinance that was used from the state fire marshal's model ordinance included this as part of the ordinance, and I believe it was seen that block party permits are a situation where fireworks may be used. So it's important that we first have a fine for failure to obtain a permit. So again, here we have our first offense, our second offense, and our third offense, which would be 500, 1,000, and 1,500. And then you have your 30-day late payment charge of 675, 1,250, and 2,000. And then we have Section 9243C, which is violation occurs when a block party permit to close a street or use a piece of the city's property happens to have a discharged dangerous fireworks at the event. So here again would be a first and second, third offense, and we're talking 1,500, $3,000, and it goes to $5,000. And then you have your 30-day penalty, which then will increase it to 1,875. Your second offense, 3,750, and your third offense would go up to 7,000. So I wanted to show you this Section 9243C, and after I read the ordinance that is in your agenda, I would like to revise this paragraph to include the sentence in red, which states... This clarifies this section, which says any person, firm, or corporation said to be in violation of the permit by virtue of the fact that there were dangerous fireworks used at said event shall be subject to the imposition and payment of the administrative fines. And I'm including this because in order to make a revision and to adopt it, we would like to make this clarification to this part of the ordinance. So the proposed ordinance language, again, was from the model ordinance provided by the state fire marshal for local jurisdictions to adopt a more streamlined method of enforcement and administrative fine procedures relating to the possession and use of less than 25 pounds of dangerous fireworks. So right now, we're looking at law enforcement who is often called out, but it's hard for them to enforce anything because they basically have to see it be discharged. And when you have a policy where it says you have... You can administratively fine for the possession, if there's proof that any legal fireworks has been discharged, then that gives us an avenue to go ahead and address violators for illegal fireworks. Many municipalities that have adopted the high-fine amounts, then they were finding an effective deterrent of violations, and revenues collected have helped to offset fire, police, or administrative costs. So that's the section on the illegal fireworks. We'll have an updated section on the sale of fireworks. Safe and sane fireworks are legal fireworks that are permitted to be sold within the city by eligible nonprofit or tax-exempt organizations during the Fourth of July holiday. And I'm sure we've all seen these stands all over the city when it's that time to... For the Fourth of July celebration. They may be purchased and used by the general public if permitted by local codes and are subject to strict restrictions. So these are the fireworks, the illegal fireworks, that if you see their packages, they will have the state seal on them indicating that they are legal. And we wanted to address the hours and dates of sales or discharge of fireworks. So state law permits legal firework sales to occur 12 noon on June 28th until 12 noon on July 6th of each year, except where local ordinances are more restrictive. So this is also the legal time for the discharge of fireworks, of legal fireworks. So our updated city code proposes a sale of fireworks to begin at 12 noon on June 28th and may be sold daily thereafter from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM and cease by 9:00 PM on July 4th. All unsold stock would be removed from the location no later than 12 noon July 5th. And it shall be unlawful to discharge any safe or sane fireworks during any other time except on Fourth of July holiday between the hours of 12 noon and 10:00 PM. It will also be unlawful for any person to discharge or permit the discharge of any safe or sane fireworks within any public property, buildings, or facilities, except by the approval of the city council. And fireworks stands may be erected no earlier than June 26th and shall be removed along with any related litter no later than July 7th of each year. So in Section 9243D, we address the violation for failure to obtain a permit to sell safe and sane fireworks, or the discharge of legal fireworks on dates and times or locations other than what is allowed. And the following fines for the first offense, second offense, and third offense are respectively 250, 500, and 750, and you have a 30-day late payment charge of 325, 650, and 1,050. So tonight's ordinance is approval of the proposed ordinance amendment with a change to Section 9243 as I presented, and it will initiate the second reading to be considered for adoption at the next scheduled meeting on December 11th, 2018. So if there are any questions or comments? Thank you.
Mayor, if I could add one nuance here, because a question that came up a number of times today is, in fact, we're just talking about it prior to the meeting. So how is this different aside from the fact that people will be fined $1,000 than what we're doing today? And Annabelle touched on it in her presentation, but I think it's really important to kind of drill down a little bit. Currently, let's say that a police officer notices someone in his vehicle witnesses an illegal firework getting lit up. He would then essentially issue them a misdemeanor violation and infraction, and then they essentially have to go to court if it even goes that far. It gets forward probably to the district attorney, and, you know, this is not a priority. Let's just put it that way, unless there's some sort of major damage that this, you know, firework inflicted. So really, the impact currently today is simply just very little if you get caught. The other component to that is that in order to issue that infraction, the officer literally has to witness it personally. Otherwise, I won't go into all of the detail, the chief could do that, but it's just... It's the most effective way if they're going to issue when it has to happen in their presence. The difference with administrative citations is it's administrative, it's just Riverbank, it's our code, we administer it, we've created an appeals process, which is in the ordinance, that the officer or code enforcement person doesn't necessarily have to witness firsthand. They can receive reports from neighbors, they can look at other evidence that gives them enough probable cause to determine that this actually occurred here, and, you know, whether it be wrappers and, you know, exploded ordinances that they can see have been lit off there, or firsthand accounts from neighbors, it gives them the ability to come in and actually cite. Because that's been the frustration from the community is they'll call, say, hey, you know, my neighbor down the street's lighting off illegal fireworks, and by the time that the police officers get over there, they're just put into the garage and no one's the wiser. So it's a very important distinction between what we're doing today and what this would put into place. So I just wanted to mention that.
I notice in the ordinance, first off, determining a block party, I think that needs to be clearly defined. We have neighbors, we get together, and, you know, we discharge the legal safe and sane fireworks in the streets, but there's no block party mentality. So there has to be a clear definition on what is a block party. Now, if they... If you include in that a barriered block, then you can say, well, that's a block party. Will you clearly define or prevent passage into that area, then you're blocking that But I don't know if that clearly has to be defined in there. Maybe you could do that in the permitting section of it.
Well, maybe perhaps we should ask you, you provide the block party permits, is that correct? Is that indicated in your application?
I think it is. I would have to look at that. I haven't looked at that in a while. I have very few requests for block parties, but...
Typically, the test is if you're blocking off public access to your street. Like, I don't... This isn't intended to say, hey, a group of neighbors and a cul-de-sac are going to get together and have a couple beers and light off fireworks, you know, along the edge of their perimeters. That's not... I think it's more intended... We have had situations in other communities as well where people will just straight up shut down their street. And then people are trying to get to their home, and they can't even drive through. But perhaps what we can do is, prior to second reading, flush that out so that you have a clear understanding of what it is currently.
That was my question.
That was my question, too. I had to explain block party permit, because I think my neighborhood's the same way. We don't ever talk to each other, but we all know we're going to be out there Fourth of July in front of our house, and he sets off his, and then he sets off his', and all the kids are running around. I mean, we don't block the street off, but I was like, oh, my gosh, I don't want to have them come down and say we're having a block party, and I didn't even know we were having a block party. I think... I guess I had the same question, too.
If we need the revenue, we will determine that.
Because I'd be like, oh, we're having a block party?
And my other comment on this ordinance, Annabelle, we, about 19 months ago, determined that vaping was also considered nicotine or an illegal. In your smoking section of the ordinance, could we either add or add in later time? I thought we had already added the vaping.
Well, we're definitely going to look at that. Donna and I have been talking about it, whether it's even in the appropriate section of the code. So we're having a conversation, but we will keep that in mind.
Churchill White has promised me that August of 2017, we would have a completed, updated... Oh, it's not 2017 yet.
Is the mayor referring to a comprehensive code update?
Yes.
Or specifically as to the vaping? Yes, we're actually currently working with city administration to hopefully roll that out soon, with an expected timeframe to be determined by the city manager.
We'll address the vaping.
We will. It's a special section.
I have a question, and it's a concern that if you can only set off your fireworks on July 4th, so... And then we sell them from June 28th all the way up to July 4th, so you could get penalized. So, you can get penalized if you do it on July 3rd or if you, you know, want to have a, a party and, you know, depending on when July 4th falls, you know, if it falls in, in the middle of the week or if it's on the weekend, most people are going to be doing it like maybe on July 3rd because it's a, it's a, a weekend. And it just seems that it's kind of like unfair that you can't set up, set off your fireworks from, you know, when you buy them, from the 28th all the way up to, um, July 4th. It just seems like it's unfair.
Well, so, this code section was primarily born from what we've recei- admittedly, it's post-July 4th, but Annabelle advised that, you know, over the years, we've had a number of complaints from folks in neighborhoods that are frustrated because once the Fourth of July is over, you still have people setting off, you know, Piccolo Pete's two days later. And, and it's like Fourth July's over, that time is over. So, as with all ordinances, if there's things that you would like to suggest we amend, that's the pleasure of the council to do, to do so. Um, I, I suppose the question would be when, when would you want the range to be if you wanted to allow something before? I think the, the main issue for, from a staff perspective is we just wanted to figure out, what's the most restrictive we could place to try to get things in line? And then we can always dial back from that point. Annabelle, is there anything I'm missing on the?
Well, the complaint, many of the complaints, um, with illegal fireworks have been calls from people who think they're illegal fireworks. And so, they're calling 911, and like I mentioned in my staff report, people are looking for their dogs or dogs are barking, and that adds on to the fireworks noise that is happening. So, um, cau- you know, residents can't distinguish, sometimes they can't distinguish between the two. They just hear it and they want it stopped, even if it's legal. So, and like Sean says, it's, it's whatever you believe the residents are going to accept and hopefully reduce the calls to police services.
I'd like to build on what council member Martinez said, I mean Vice Mayor Martinez, and, uh, because the world's a little different with jobs and people getting together. I see some families, you know, coming and sometimes needing to do it, say, a little bit earlier because some of them have to work maybe on the Fourth of July or a couple of days, you know? Unfortunately, we, we don't all work eight to five and get the same days off. And I'd like to, I understand everything that's being said about it, but I'd like to build maybe a little bit more flexibility in on it for those reasons, because sometimes they just can't do it on the Fourth of July per se. I mean, if we could maybe a day or day before or a day after, something like that, to give it a little leeway. I don't think, and, you know, that would be too impractical. And we would be trying to meet the needs of society more because everybody isn't off on the Fourth of July to do it and celebrate with their family. So, just consider that as one of the things that I'd like to do with, to go along with what, uh, councilman, Vice Mayor Darlene Martinez said.
Is there a time you would like to propose then? I mean, or, or are we talking maybe, uh, July 3rd, beginning July 3rd?
July 3rd, maybe to July 5th or the most...
What the state law says, you can light them off through July 6th.
Through July 6th.
I think that would be a good timeframe.
The, the thing is...
I would refrain from, uh, shooting them off on New Year's.
But the thing is, is that when you do have a safe and sane fireworks booth, uh, immediately, like, early, early in the morning on July 5th, they're, they're taking down those, those stands. So, m- most of the stands will either be taken down by the end of the day on July 5th. Very rarely do you see a stand that's still up on the 6th, very rarely. But even if we go from like maybe July 1st and through the, through July 4th, um, I think that that would be okay. I mean, a lot of people like to celebrate July 4th holiday. And you buy your fireworks with that intent that you're gonna, you know, have fun. So, I don't want to, um, us have a reputation of being the mean folks because that's not our intent of the ordinance. And I just want to make one more comment that I do like the, um, the timeframe that we have in the ordinance, which says, and it coordinates with all of our other, uh, noise ordinance to cut everything off at 10. So, I, I like that piece of it too. So, there's no confusion.
Yes, thank you.
I have a comment about, um, after July 4th. I think, um, Cal and I, both of the comments we heard a lot, whether it's on Facebook or in our meetings, was citizens don't want them after July 4th. People have to go back to work on the 5th. Kids have to go to sleep so that the parents can go to sleep. And having it after Fourth of July becomes a problem. So, I'm, I think a couple of days before, maybe July 1st through the 4th would be good, but I have a concern about having it after the Fourth of July.
One more comment. Annabelle, I think you did a terrific job on putting this together. I know it wasn't easy. And when, if and when we do pass this, I think this next Fourth of July, we have to make a major effort to really enforce it the first time around. And I say that because our neighbor, one of our neighboring cities passed an ordinance and, uh, last year, and they only gave two citations, and they happened to be the biggest city in the county, and there was a lot more going on. Otherwise, it won't be of a successful thing, but I think we're off to a good start. And I think with the fire hazards that these can create, think about paradise.
Yes.
And we're in an area that if the winds were right and a fire started, this could be paradise. So, we have to do everything we can to protect our city.
Yes, thank you. And, um, I'd like to say that, that, that's true. So, do we have consensus then for the July 1st through the 4th?
I would like to see it extended, keep it with the state's guidelines. But, um, we'll do that after the public hearing.
Yeah, well, I'm going to need to present the amendment how you want it on...
Mayor, are you saying that after you've opened and closed?
After, after we've got a public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We haven't done the public hearing part yet. I know that, I know what's legal.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. I open it up for the public. Do we have any public input? Saying none, I close public hearing, bring it back to the council. I'm in agreement with the state because of the way people work. They may not even be able to be in the area if they're, let's say their job is in the Bay Area. They come back, um, after, uh, you see it, right now it's from the 28th through the 6th for, for the, uh, using of the safe and sane. We're after the illegal fireworks. We're not after the safe and sane. And we want to make sure that the safe and sane remains safe and sane. Oh, I have to explode all of these today, and I went down and bought 250. What are some of the sales? You have some $500 sales, don't you? And so, trying to do $500 worth of fireworks at one time, you know, you could have them all explode at once. So, um, that's my druthers. But we're going after the illegal fireworks, and that's what the ordinance should be going after.
I have to agree with the mayor on the basis that this is a basically a one-time period of the year that we're doing it. And I said a little bit of flexibility because of people that have to work at certain times that may not be able to do it right there at that time. It gives them the opportunity. Plus, it gives our nonprofits the opportunity to make a little more during that period too.
Um, again, I'm going to comment that, yes, we are definitely after the illegals. They are horrible and are scary. But as a person that has to get up at 5:00 o'clock in the morning and they like to do the, what is it? The Piccolo Pete at 11:00 o'clock at night, I'd rather them not do it after the 4th. That's my opinion.
The Declaration of Independence was presented in July 4th to the Continental Congress, did not get signed until the 6th.
Uh-oh, that's a whole nother argument.
Earplugs.
What is the council's desire? We'll, we'll go with consensus.
Are we talking about the discharge or the sale and discharge?
Yes, the discharge.
Discharge, okay.
I propose that, um, the, the ordinance be as is with a change to the dates from, is it June 26th or 28th?
28th.
28th through, and I'm going to say July 4th. I'm sure somebody else will contradict that. I move a motion.
And I second the motion because I like the dates.
28th through the 4th?
28th through the 4th.
Okay, we have a motion for the 28th through the 4th and a second.
Councilmember Fosse, yes.
No.
Jones Cruz.
No.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
No.
Motion fails, 2, 3.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow the discharge of safe and sane fireworks to be from the 28th of, uh, June through the 6th of July in accordance with state law.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to, uh, approve with the 28th through the 6th, uh, July, and a second.
Councilmember Fosse.
No.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
No.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes, 3, 2.
No one let me talk. I didn't even want it.
Okay.
I didn't get to say what I wanted to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I got a vote for it, so I'm all right.
All right, moving on to item 6.1, approval of a resolution to waive or a resolution to defer system development fees for the Zaya and Zaya LLC Del Rio Office Project.
Thank you, Mayor. Donna, Kenny, Planning and Building Manager, will give this report this evening.
Good evening again, uh, councilmembers and mayor. Okay, so I'll, I'll briefly talk about system development fees. Actually, this is a typo, the Riverbank Commons. I had just finished the Riverbank Commons, uh, staff report and such when I started in on this one. So, there's two places where I have that in typos, and I apologize. So, what are system development fees? They provide an adequate and constant method for the financing of system development costs throughout the city. They promote the orderly and efficient expansion of public improvements. And they can, they ensure the continuation of necessary services, including but not limited to police and general administrative services. And it's an equitable method for having every developer pay their own fair share. So, system development fees are charged to new construction, including the expansion of and/or addition to an existing non-residential structure and to mitigate the unf- unfunded portion of the determined impact of the development. And there again, you see my typo, Riverbank Commons. So, these are actually the fees, um, that are for the, um, the Del Rio offices. And where this is located is where the Reed's Garage used to be. And they, uh, demoed that project about a year and a half ago. And, um, due to economic, um, issues, they were unable to move forward with the project. But they would like to do so now and re- open, excuse me, construct a 5,000-square-foot building there and then use those proceeds to, um, work on the Del Rio Theater Building. So, you can see the streets and public work fees, um, are the most expensive, about $28,000. We have some high storm drain fees, uh, police, general government. No parks and recreation because this is not a subdivision. It's, um, a commercial facility. So, the total system development fees come to around $73,000, which is based on a 5,000-square-foot building without sprinklers. And I had put without credits, but I misunderstood what, uh, Janet had told me when she did these permit quotes. So, actually, the, um, the full fees are $73,000. But whenever the city has an older billing, building that's torn down, say you have a 500-square-foot building that you tear down and you build a 1,000-square-foot new building, we give you credit on the 500-square-foot that you demoed because it's assumed that they already had paid their fair share sometime in the past. Whether or not that's true, we give them the benefit of the doubt. And so, uh, basically, the, um, when you award these fee credits, it's to encourage rapid development. And so, you award them the fee credits if they pull a building permit within one year's time. Since this has been about a year and a half since the building was demolished, technically, he would have lost those credits. But because of the economy, you know, we're coming to you tonight to see whether or not he should be allowed these credits as well as maybe a waiver or deferral of these fees. So, if he were to be given the fee credits, I think I, let's see. So, the total amount is $73,000 for the building. And then credits for demolishing the building come to $37,000. And that's based on the square footage of what Reed's Garage was. So, if he is given those credits, then his total amount of fees is, uh, $35,000. Uh, some local examples, Turlock has deferred fees, um, split them at permit issuance and final. And the city has, has done that as well with, um, Diamond Bar West. Uh, we allowed them to pay most of their fees at the, um, building final as, uh, instead of at, um, permit issuance. Uh, City of Ripon does the same thing, and Stanislaus County has done that, um, as well. They, um, actually contracted with, uh, Mark Wilber to defer his fees until building final. So, the applicant, because of, um, the increased cost with doing this project from when he first started out, he had thought that the building would be about one point that, okay, excuse me, I'm getting ahead of myself here. So, since he wants to build this building and lease it out and put the money into the Del Rio Building, uh, the theater building, um, he would like to have a waiver of the fees because he believes that this will give, um, some stimulus to the downtown to get this site taken care of and maybe encourage the neighboring sites to do so as well. So, that would, if you were given, if he was given the credits, that would be about $35,000 of fees that the city wouldn't be getting at this time. If you're not open to waiving those fees, um, he respectfully would like you to push them to the future, defer them. Staff had suggested five years, but he was hoping for a deferral of 10 years. Like I said, so this building itself and the rents that he would get from developing this structure would go into the Del Rio, uh, Theater Building. So, um, it's recommended that you consider his petition to waive or defer the fees. So, either approve the revol- resolution to waive the fees with or without the credits or approve a resolution to defer the fees with or without the credits or deny the waiver and deferral.
Sorry about that.
Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the, uh, the project developer is here as well.
I have a couple of comments, questions on the streets, public works. What improvements do you see that that is required for these buildings and for the Del Rio? This is just the, for the new buildings. Um, it, it's already developed out, is it not?
Correct, but this would be for the, you know, the, the maintenance, the, the wear and tear on the, the facility, the streets around the building?
So, actually, the SDF fee that he's paying is, uh, keep in mind, it's a pro-rata share of every single major traffic project we have planned in the city. And so, the idea is that each project puts in a little bit of money towards Rozelle and, uh, the, the Signal at Rozelle and Patterson, or, you know, pick a project. We've got dozens of them. So, that's, the concept isn't so much that it would like go to pay for the actual improvements around his property. It's towards those other ones.
And, um, I'm sure you're going to tell me the same thing on the water, wastewater, uh, storm drains. How about the police and general government?
Same, so it'll go towards the, you know, a potential new city hall building, you know, new capital that we need for, for general government.
Okay, I just would like to look at others that we have waived or reduced the fees, most notably the Galaxy Theater, where we waived over a quarter million dollars, because we wanted them to come and develop, and we wanted them to have an IMAX. And those were significant amounts, and they also got a waiver of the PFFs from the county, which was another significant amount. When we're going and asking for public comment, I'd like us to keep in mind what we have done in the past. And here we have someone wanting to develop to protect an iconic symbol of the city of Riverbank. And that iconic symbol, I believe, could be withstanding for a long time with your development, sir. However, if you find that you can't proceed with renovation of the Del Rio without the demolition, that it would be, in my opinion, a contingency that you have to keep that iconic symbol. But those are my thoughts on that right now.
I, I have one more thing to add. In speaking to the, the property owner, you have another item on your agenda tonight concerning electronic city signs. And the intersection of Third and Atchison has been determined to be one of the better locations for putting up an electronic city sign. And the property owner would be willing to work with us to select a location on the edge of his property to install an electronic sign. We haven't worked out any details, but he is extremely open to the suggestion.
That's not a bribe, is it?
No. It's a happy coincidence.
There was no suggestion.
It was my suggestions based on these reports coming together the way they did.
Okay, thank you.
I'll go.
Yes, go.
Um, I, I'm right in line with, how come I'm the hardest time with that button tonight? I'm usually on it. I'm kind of like-minded here, where I think we do need to kind of look at what we have done in the past. And I've kind of gone back and forth on this. I think we've learned some lessons on some of the things that we've done also. I think we have to be careful of some slippery slopes when it comes to granting fee waivers and that kind of thing. But I also think that our downtown really needs some, some help, and I think that this is, if it's one, if it's what we all hope and wish it to be, that it could be part of a cornerstone to draw more people down here. So that's kind of my thoughts.
Yes, if you wish. You don't have to.
Oh, but I'm gonna.
I know.
While I'm excited that there is something being done with the Del Rio, I must say that I'm disappointed it's not any farther along. I have a concern that it will move farther along, based on what's been happening with it. Also, I have a concern that we're comparing the Galaxy to this location. The Galaxy has brought in a lot of people to Riverbank, whereas the Del Rio, I think, once he, I believe it's a piano bar, are you still doing the piano bar?
We're talking about the offices.
Right, well, eventually, it's going to have all this, and if we're going to waive the fees based on what we've done in the past, that won't bring like a lot of people from around, but will bring people from Riverbank. So I have a concern about doing, waiving of fees based on what we did with Galaxy, based on the amount of income that it would bring into the city. I also feel that if we are going to either do a waiver or, what's the other word? Differ. There needs to be an agreement in writing that the project will move forward in a certain number of years, so that we make sure that it does build out. That's my comments.
And just to refresh your memory, the Del Rio Theater Building is slated to be a coffee shop, a high-end piano bar, and then the banquet facility behind it.
Well, I am so ever excited about getting any of the projects going. I think it's been a long time coming. We've been talking about it and talking about it. And while I am in an agreement with helping as a city, I just don't want to set any precedence that we are, you come to Riverbank, you want to build and, or, you know, have a development, and then we waive everybody's fees. I don't want that to happen either. So I'm kind of torn between whether we should waive or defer, but something, I want us to do something.
I've got a suggestion, I hope to fly. I agree with what Vice Mayor Darlene Martinez said, and also with what Councilmember Jones Cruz said. So I favor possibly deferring the fees for 10, 10 years. That lets you off the hook for that period of time. And when we see how successful you are, we may open up and review and make some adjustments as time goes along. That gives us some protection along the way and puts you where you want to be put too. And so I'd like to suggest something of that nature be devised for the agreement.
Okay, this is a public meeting, anyone from the public wishing to speak?
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for your service, I appreciate you guys. Just some, some feedback here on, give you guys an update on the Del Rio. So for the past 12 months, I've been working with this great lady here, Donna, and to no fault of mine or us, this project has been delayed for the last 12 months. There has been issues that has cost us a lot of money. One is we've had issues with the people that we had hired as far as timing, getting all the project, all the paperwork submitted and getting the feedback back and forth. And also, the delay in the project cost us a lot of money because of the tariffs. The building cost me 10% more because steel has gone up. And also, I want to remind everybody, please, there is contamination in this corner. I just paid a bill today for $35,000 to get it removed, and we're working on it right now. In the next two, three days, you're going to see people here removing all the bad soil. So please keep that in mind. Nobody's more eager here, believe me, to get this going more than me. I've had, already spent about $450,000 in this corner. Just some feedback on the Del Rio. Del Rio is a big onion, okay? And I think everybody here knew that. As you peel the onion, you find out other things that you need to do that you had no idea that you needed to do. So so far, the $350,000 we spent at the Del Rio has been removing all the asbestos in it, right? All the bad pipes, all the electricity and the plumbing and the asbestos, all that is gone. The contaminated flooring or ground or dirt is being removed in the next two days. So all that is money that I've spent to beautify this city. I am committed 100% to this corner. I am committed 100% in making this city to go with the name, City of Action. We want to make it beautiful, we want to make it nice, we want to make it to a place where people are going to come in and enjoy themselves. I want to be a good neighbor, and I know he or Sue would verify that for the last three years, we've been giving them the, the free parking lot to help out with the Wine and Cheese Festival. I want to do what's right for the city, but I need your help. I really need your help. If there's any way, I mean, the, the fees are not much, but I can definitely use that money into the project. My commitment to you, the building, by the way, this building is already delivered, is sitting in the parking lot, is covered right now. Once the, the land is, the dirt is removed, we have the contractors here, and then this building will be up by January, February time, you're going to have a brand-new 5,000 square feet building. That's my promise to you, that's my word. It's, it's happening right now, the building is sitting out there. Once that's done, we're going to lease it out. The, the conversation is already with the bank to get a loan on this building here and start working on the Del Rio. So that's my commitment to you, and if I need to give it to you in writing, I'm more than, than willing to do that. I appreciate you considering my proposal to waive these fees, and I give you a commitment that I'll be the best neighbor you can have. Thank you.
Any other public comment? So then I'm going to bring it back to the council for consideration.
Mayor, if, if council's intention or, or vote this evening is to, is to waive the fees, city attorney and I have discussed, and we would suggest that you add a, a recital to your resolution that states that, obviously, the reason that, that the fees are being well waived, it says an overwhelming public economic development benefit here. And it's important to have that recited in your resolution, so there's some justification for the, the fee waiver. Alternatively, if you decide to defer, we would recommend that the time period be specified, and you can add that to the resolution that can be passed tonight, and then we will put together some sort of agreement that both part the city signs and Mr. Zaya's signs that sort of memorializes that, that will bring in a consent calendar, agenda item at a future meeting for council to approve, so that he can move forward with his project and know that we're, it'll give us the legal backing essentially to, to defer if that's the way council wants to go.
Okay.
Other thing here? Crazy idea, and I'm just going to throw it out there. Why can't we do a combination of both? Why can't we give a discount on the fees and defer something?
That was the credit. So you, you want the credit?
Yeah, then I'm, yeah.
Okay. So we restore the credit and then defer it for 10 years with the caveat that?
Well, then I misunderstood it, because I thought it was, I thought it was one or the other. And I apologize for not having that clearer in my head. I understood the, the fee deferral, I'm trying to go back here to all the prices, but why can't we do, I guess, maybe I'm not being clear enough. Our option is to either defer the fees or, can I have your, your screen back up here, the one?
So Councilmember Jones Cruz, I see where you're going here.
I'm sorry, I can't think quick enough on the spot here of what I'm, what I'm talking about.
No, no, you're, you're right on. They, they already deferred the $35,000 and, $37,000 and change, correct? I mean, credited the $37,000.
Yeah, I got that part.
So that's done. There is no reason that if you, for example, said, okay, we're okay waiving $20,000 and the 15 and change, we will defer for a period of time, you absolutely could do that if you wanted to.
So that's kind of where I was going with it, was not necessarily like deferring it. Now you've got me all confused. But I wanted, I wanted to not have the, not defer it, not defer the whole thing. I wanted them to have a little bit. I don't know what I'm saying, but I think you know what I've, I've got here, and I'm sorry, I can't think fast enough to get all the numbers. How come you're not on it? You're the number guy.
Well, I'm waiting for you.
He's over there, he's got all the numbers, right there, and I was, I was waiting for you.
The total cost for the system development fee as presented was $73,035.
Yes, so that's what's left after the $35,000 credit.
No, no.
Have I got them all?
So they asked us, if you want to restore the credit, it would be reduced to $35,000, that'd be about, yeah, $35,000. So that's what we're looking at right now for the deferrals, $35,000, if we restore the credit.
And I might want to point out too, that they didn't ask to waive or defer the police or the administrative fees.
There we go.
Okay, Donna, can you go one more slide over? So Donna, just so we make sure.
Back to this one?
Yeah, we're clear here. Our policy internally, and correct me if I'm wrong, Donna, is, is to apply these credits. Let's say council never saw this item, he would get his credit of 37, 241, 13, because there was previously a structure on site, correct?
If he used it within a year, he's, it's been a year and a half.
Oh, it's the year thing, okay, got it.
Yeah, it's been a year and a half, so he doesn't.
So you lose that right unless council says, okay, we're, we're gonna, we know it's been a year and a half, but we're okay with that, so.
Okay, but the $35,000 isn't all of the fees.
Well, that's, it doesn't include the administrative or police fees in that $35,000.
Okay, so, okay, now let's go to the last one, the last slide.
Last slide?
I think what would be easiest for councils, if you just want, no, no, I'm sorry, Donna, the one that had all of, all the numbers. It would be just if you tell us what the percentage you want to do, if you want some sort of blended, half-deferred, half-waved, we will work out the math component of it, or pick, or you could pick one or the other.
And the only reason I kind of was throwing out there an idea of blended, because then it doesn't feel like we're just giving everything away. And I think that that's kind of some things that we struggled a little bit with the Galaxy, is that we felt like we gave everything away, but at least I did. And I wasn't there on the council at that time, but I just feel like, and like I said earlier, I just have some issues with coming to the fact that every time we want to have something big in Riverbank, out, go there, you know, they're going to waive all the fees for you. And I think with some of the other smaller projects that we've had, we necessarily haven't waived all the fees for some of the other smaller projects that we have going on. So although I really am excited about all this, and I just think that there's maybe a way of doing some sort of blended something that, you know, we, we waive some of the fees, but then some of the fees we have, we can defer them out too. I just think that, that just settles a little better with me, is that we just kind of do a blended thing. And I'm sorry, I couldn't think enough, it just kind of came to me, I'm like, man, because I kind of struggled with, with one, one way or another, and I kind of, you know, waffled back and forth with this, and I just think, it just kind of goes over better with me myself of just kind of doing something blended with both of them. Deferring some fees and then waiving some fees, but just not the whole thing, not one or the other. And I don't know why we can't do that.
What I would be open to is, is giving the credit again, the, the 30-some thousand credit, and deferring the 35 balance. And then, does he have to pay the police and the administrative fee?
He didn't ask to have those deferred or waived, and he also just wanted me to mention that he has to pay about $30,000 to the county as well as the city fees.
Okay, well, I would say we waive the 30, the balance after the credit, along with those also for 10 years.
Defer. I just, I just have one more comment to make, Bill. You said that you spent about $350,000 on contaminated soil to remove that or to get rid of it?
$35,000.
For the office building is by $35,000.
Okay, for the contaminated soil, and that's, so you've got that taken care of?
It's going to be removed in the next two days, yes.
Okay, we have to look at that, that that's an improvement to that property. And so we, we have benefited a little bit from what he's done, that even though the building's not there, whoever had it after him has had that taken care of. And so look at that also, and I still, like what I proposed earlier, give him the credit, we'll put the $35,000 under 10-year, and as you progress, we'll bring it open, and maybe down the road, we can do it a little bit more, but we need some insurance and assurances because we don't want to get the reputation, we're just giving everything away for it in this, in this city. Okay?
I'm okay with giving him the credit, because I, I see that he had some issues and couldn't get to it a year and a half.
Give him the credit, just defer the rest.
And, and deferring 10 years. All of it, though, not, not just the 35, but also the, the police and the administrative fee.
And remember that the credit that you'd be giving him amounts to a waiver. It's a waiver, it's a waiver, period.
The, I know when we did Thunderbolt, we waived a lot of water and sewer connections on that, when they increased the size of the warehouse, because there was no additional restroom facilities, there was no additional, and they have to take care of it, storm water. Okay, I think that would be something that we could do, is waive or, or apply the credit and waive 90% of the fees for 10 years, and 10% of the fees be paid in administration and the police services. That's what I would suggest.
So Mayor, I just want to be clear, the credit applies, so the $35,000 and change, $37,000 and change, your, your proposal $37,000 and change, your proposal would be that the remainder of the fees all are deferred, anything that's left over, except for the police and administrative?
Yes.
Which is, what, 2,000?
5,400, something like that.
See, you do have the numbers in your head.
I do, but I have to know where you want me to go with them.
Well, we can't talk earlier.
I'm okay with that, too. I agree.
Okay.
That's what I wanted.
All right. I move that we accept item 6.1 to defer fees of the police, general, and government and administrative fees, and defer...
No, no, Mayor, I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but that's the one you wanted to keep, with the administrative and police, correct?
Except for, to defer, accept.
Accepted, okay, just want to make sure that's on the record.
And apply the credit of $37,000 plus to, to the total project. Now, does that reduce your administrative fees if we apply the credit?
No.
Nope? We're tough.
Can you read that back to me?
We're the smallest little category.
Can we have it read back?
Under new business, item 6.1, I'm going to resolution, I'm going to go to two, approve the resolution to defer the fees, and apply the credit of $37,000 plus, and the fees deferred is everything except for the police and the administrative fee.
Okay, got it.
I need a second.
I second that motion, thank you.
The motion to approve item 6.1 to defer the fees, first, apply the credit, defer the fees for up to 10 years of all the system development fees, except for police and administrative fees, and we have a second.
Councilmembers, Fossey?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.2, electronic signage for advertising city events and downtown activity.
Wow, thank you, Mayor and council. So, this one is a little easier to wrap your head around, a lot less math, Sue's going to walk you through, her and Donna have worked very hard on trying to come up with a couple of options, and we think we found a really good one for signage.
Hey, so, Mayor, members of the council, at the strategic planning session back in June, we did talk a little bit about electronic signage, and signage in general. Oops, did I hit the wrong one?
Hurty.
What happened?
Right button?
So, when we were talking about electronic signage, one of the goals was, or a couple of the goals, was to direct traffic downtown and also advertise city events. We all missed that sign that blew down a few years back, even though it was real basic, we missed that, so, we were kind of talking about ways to, to accomplish that, and so, Donna and I, our building manager, did some research, and we looked at purchased electronic signage, where we purchased the sign, it's installed, and then we are responsible for the maintenance and all of those things. The non-electric signs, like we have at the teen center, we have the, the signs, again, where you replace the letters, that works out good for that location, and also we have one at the entryway. The bad thing is you have to make time to go and change those letters out and keep that updated, but that's a possibility as well. And then there was electronic signage, which is DSN, which is Digital Sign Network, and they have an option of city-owned versus leased signage, so I'll kind of talk a little bit about that. This is the, kind of a sample that was sent of a sign that you can order, and it's shipped here, and, you know, we are responsible for the programming, the maintenance and all of that, and the quote that I got was about $20,000 for the sign, and then the installation is, is extra, which I didn't get a quote on yet, but it's, it's pretty expensive, then programming yourself, and then maintaining yourself. But that's kind of an idea. This is another sample of a sign you can purchase, and you just change out the letters. More affordable, but not as nice. The Digital Sign Network is the one that caught Donna and I, Donna and I, because there is one located in Oakdale on the 108, and everybody was kind of wondering where that sign was purchased, or how that worked, and so we did research on that, and it's a company that is located in Stockton and serves the San Joaquin, Stanislaus, and Merced area, and the owners, Linda Jost and Andy Sorries, are here, and to answer any specific questions if you have them. And they have, like I mentioned, the city-owned or lease option. With the lease option, the company provides the sign, the installation, the program, programming, and the maintenance, there's no cost to the city, except for the electrical, which caught our eye. Advertising would be sold with an 80%, 20% split, where city receives 20% of the revenue of the advertising that are solicited. Some things about the advertisement, the size and the design of the sign would involve city input, city would give guidelines as to what is approved and not approved, such as cigarettes or gambling, whatever the city might want to put in their policy. As the city deemed as not appropriate, will not be posted. City would receive a spot on each side to use as they choose. A spot can be shared by multiple events, for example, cheese and wine, watering days, promoting shopping downtown. And some of the, the sign locations are, like Donna mentioned, Third and Atchison, proximity to the downtown area, and the line of sight from both east and west traffic, that was kind of the number one pick. The Fountain, which is good for traffic heading towards downtown. Number three was the Overpass at the Tracks, good for westbound traffic. And number four was the northeast corner of the Claws and Clarabelle, due to the growing amount of traffic and increasing development of business. And just on the map, it's kind of hard to see, but I think you have a hard copy as well, and there's some in the back, but just kind of the location of three of the signs, the number one, two, and three options. This is the sign that's in Oakdale, just a sample of what it could look like, and there's different sizes, different, you know, designs. So, if there's any questions, I can answer those, or the owners of the signs can answer, but the next steps would be, the staff would return to the city council with an agreement with the sign company and a more definite proposal for a location. Or we can do additional research of other types of signage, if you'd like.
I have a quick question. The last slide that you had, is that the DSN? Is that the DSN sign?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have the opportunity to purchase a second sign? If we wanted, say, when they get done with Roselle and Claratina, or somewhere else?
Yes, and that's kind of what we were thinking, is to start with one, see how it goes, see how the revenue is, the nice thing is, no cost to the city, and it's a revenue generator. But, yeah, we could evaluate how that goes, and do we want to then purchase a sign? Do we want to do the lease option again? But we can use the first one as kind of the, see how it goes.
Do we have an idea of average cost? I mean, does it, it depends on, of course, probably what you want to advertise, but is there, you know, like a one or two words, or?
Or the average cost of the advertising itself?
Uh-huh, yes.
Linda, do you want to talk on that a little bit more? Those are more specifics that she could speak on a little bit better. This is Linda.
Council, nice to meet you, thank you for having me this evening, and I will tell you that this is intimidating, and I suddenly can't think. You asked about revenue, I believe, was the question, and that's based, there's basically 60 seconds in a minute, for every one of those minutes, you get about seven and a half ads. The law dictates that you can only have the ads run every, about eight seconds, they have to be on there for about eight seconds, and there's a little bit of wiggle room with that, the council can decide on how long they want the ad to display. Based on how many ads you have per minute, how many slots are filled, your revenue is going to be, is going to change depending on how much you want to charge for those. So, if you want to charge as much as they do on Highway 99, you're probably not going to get very many people buying ads, but if you want to charge about what they charge out in Oakdale, or in that range, the, the rates will be different, and then your revenue, of course, is going to be directly affected by that. I don't remember exactly what the question was, or even who asked it. You know, I kind of thought you might ask that. Oakdale is, it's kind of hard to explain it without, and I would, I apologize for not recognizing how quickly you guys move on decisions, and you don't, I was not prepared at all for you to really ask this many, very many good questions.
Not fast enough, but that's okay.
Say it again?
No, it also depends on how many advertisements you have.
Yes, so, I'll try and make this make some sense, but if you have three different levels, you have people that come in, and they want to buy, at the lowest level, their spots are only shown once, or, let's see, they're shown 18 times in an hour. I have the minute breakdown on a slide, on a spreadsheet at home, but not on this one. If they come in at the next level, they would be seen 37 times in an hour, and at a gold, they would be shown 56 times in a minute, so base, in an hour. Basically, it comes down to once a minute, about once and a half a minute, and about, or about half that much, and then about a third that much. The math is, is not exact, is, and you know what, I probably should just send you the link so you can see these numbers for yourself, but Oakdale charges for, for one side, $1,000 for the gold level, 625 for the mid-range level, and $500 for the low level, and that's on a four-week basis. Yes, and, and you can sell them, you don't have to sell them, they don't have to sign a contract for a year unless you want them to sign it for a year, they could sign it for less than that, and then, of course, your revenue, you want to give them a discount, because the more you buy, the better price you get, so it's very flexible.
And what is your, what is, what would be our, or your break point? I mean, how much do you need per month to make that viable here in the city of Riverbank?
I can't answer that directly, simply because making it viable...
If your sign is 20,000, installation is 15, that's 45,000, when do you want your ROI?
I understand the question. There's no cost to you, so making it viable to you...
But it's a cost to you.
Right, and that's going to depend on what our costs are, and what, what it's going to require, we would make money almost no matter what. I mean, we don't lose at this, neither does the city, that's why we designed it this way, we set it up so that there's nonprofit rates, when there's a nonprofit organization that wants to have an ad, you want to be a little more flexible with them, so we set it up so that nonprofits can get people to either split the cost, so like, she was talking, you get five slides, for example, you can have five, five things in one spot. So, there's seven and a half spots per minute, essentially.
Right.
If you fill one spot with five different things, and they all say, "See you at the Wine and Cheese Festival, sponsored by Del Rio," "See you at the Wine and Cheese Festival, sponsored by Galaxy," and each one of them split the cost of that, then the nonprofit gets the fifth, you get four people to pay, and the fifth one gets it free, and that's the nonprofit organization. The other way would be for them to tell us who some of their supporters are, and we would call their supporters, or work with them to call supporters and get their slot for free.
If we have a desire to expand it, like on Oakdale Road in front of crossroads, and also on Clarabelle, on, at crossroads, that would be more of a revenue generator, because everyone would want their, their signage.
What we're proposing, when we chose, when we selected the one at the Del Rio as our first choice, would be, because, first of all, we were looking at it being mounted on the side of the wall, so you're not having the expense of sign permits that have new pylon signs and all of the, the things that go with that. It also would only be one-sided, so how many people see it is going to affect how much revenue you have. The revenue on this one wouldn't be quite as much, but the advantage to the downtown district is that it's two blocks from downtown, and it's a great directional location, plus it's on a wall, so they don't have the distraction of the trees and the things behind it, if you look at a picture that has nothing behind it, you're going to see just the picture. So, there's that advantage, but over at, say, crossroads, yeah, your traffic is going to be a lot higher, your visibility is going to be higher, because it's going to be coming from both sides, that wasn't an intersection that was even discussed.
No, no, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, forward on it.
Of, of course.
But at first, I wanted, I want on Patterson Road, and one on Atchison, pointing towards, because you'll get both traffics, eventually, but, okay, and then, as we're coming into the city from different parts, Claws and Clarabelle, going into the city from, on Oakdale, going in on Patterson Road.
Right.
Have those type of signs displaying for the businesses in those locations, but also a good avenue for the city to have the Christmas parade, cheese and wine, I don't know, something good about me, though, we could...
Welcome to Riverbank?
Yes.
Your picture, of course.
Absolutely, all right, let's work on that one. So, no.
We did that in Oakdale, what, you know, you do what works.
You're right, but no, and that could be a good promoter of lesser-known businesses, lesser-known events, and be, I think, a way to get things out.
Of course.
Such as water bills, other things that are, we're having difficulties with.
And the pricing structure is designed specifically for what you're saying, those lesser-known businesses, that are smaller, that can't afford the top dollar, the gold level, those are a lower rate, so that they can get publicity also, they can get some advertising too, and they don't have to buy in at the big dog price.
And if you only have, let's say initially, you only have 12 companies, businesses that want to advertise, I could see six downtown, not, not much more above that. So, that's why I'm, I would be a little hesitant, not that I'm, I do want it, but we need more businesses down here, but that might start generating direction going, oh, you have it downtown.
Directional, directional signs, like at Del Rio, a directional sign there, and where the fountain is, is that Atchison and Patterson? Is that where the...
It's Calendar and Patterson.
Okay, so that, where the fountain is, that's another good directional sign, just because it's headed right towards downtown, so those people coming into the area, no, Claws and, Claws and, over by Bell Passy, over at the ammo?
Clarabelle.
Clarabelle, Clarabelle. This is so intimidating, I got to tell you. Those are all really exceptionally good places to put signs that are going to generate more revenue, and also bring attention to the stores where they're located.
I'm confused, the sign that you're talking about, at, for example, you're talking about putting it on the Del Rio building?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be one option.
If this is the Del Rio building, and this is Patterson, are you putting it here, or are you putting it here?
Is 108 Patterson?
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
No.
I'm sorry, if this is 108...
108 is Atchison.
Atchison.
Atchison, are you putting it on this side of it, or this side?
Not on the front, because isn't the front a corner-facing front?
Because I was going to say, nobody...
Yeah, not on the front, on that big blank side.
Okay, so there'd only be one side, that, one flow of traffic that would be able to see it?
Yes, yes.
As opposed to if you put it on Atchison and...
Across the street from it, yeah, right across the street where, right by that car wash, that was one of the first places we were looking at, and that's...
That would be a two-way.
Exactly, and it would be an excellent location, the only reason we like the Del Rio better, not the only reason, but one of the main reasons we like the Del Rio better is just gone, just totally gone, just a second. We like the Del Rio building personally...
Don't have to do the pylon and all that.
Right, and because, oh, because the visibility coming from the... And because, oh, because the visibility coming from the other direction isn't as good as coming from the east. The, the cars going west, you can see that Del Rio sign almost the minute you come around that curve there at Claus. All that direction, you can, you can almost see it.
Going out of town.
You're going from, from Claus coming into town?
Oakdale to Riverbank.
Right. That has such a huge directional visibility. The only other places that have directional visibility that are any better than that is the one side that would be coming from the west going east, right there at the fountain.
Okay. I think the, we got the, I think what our direction is going to be was to sue. Now, let's move on with the-
And we can figure, there's other locations that we haven't even flushed out fully yet that are either-
There are lots of other locations.
Whole, like, you know, two-sided ones that are along Atchison that we've talked about already. So what we're really more interested is, if you like the concept, we'll find a great place for it and we'll bring that back.
Yes, we like the concept. But that's a consensus.
The, the best part of this is the word revenue. It generates revenue for you instead of it being an expense for you.
Without having to do the signage.
Exactly. And if you have, if you were to own it and do it yourself, you would have to hire somebody to do it.
Right.
Sounds good to me.
So I believe our direction is sue, continue on in this vein, going for one that will generate the revenue without incurring expenses for one or two signs. And then we'll see about purchasing it for other areas that we know will be high revenue generators.
Right. Not purchasing, but at least doing the same thing with the revenue, right?
No, purchase later on.
If it gives a high revenue, we might consider purchasing because we might make more money off of it.
Right, but you also have to hire someone.
Uh-huh. But it might pay for itself for the high revenue.
We can research-
Well, we'll discuss that as, because let's say that you get it at crossroads and you have a large revenue base.
We'll do some more research on some of the signage that people do have that, that own it as well. So we'll have a little-
It's a good first step, if the consensus is, we kind of like this idea, to, to get a, you know, electronic sign, see how it works out, see if it really works for the communities. Is there a comment you have? Sounds like-
Yes, I do. Real quick, that the downtown businesses have already talked about going collectively to do electronic signage at Galaxy Theater because the expense to get up there and, on the theater, things where they do. So they've already, like, talked amongst themselves about going collectively with something like that. So I know if you're concerned about having enough businesses go in and do this, they're already there.
Good.
And I think they'd rather have their own sign out here that is pointing, you know, come down here, but they've already talked to each other and they're like, oh, yeah, let's do that. So they're kind of working collectively to do something like that for some signage. So I know for a matter of fact that to do something like this, they would be totally on board for. And I know they'd rather spend their money on something like that rather than down there where this is, I think, more beneficial to them.
Okay.
So, just so you know.
Thank you.
So we'll come back with more definite, an agree, a sample agreement or an agreement to review and also some, a definite location for approval or a few options to bring to council as soon as, soon as we can put that together.
And Mayor, I don't think you open public comment on this item.
I got one more quick question. If we were to go with your company, how long would it take you to get the sign up?
I think they said about three months.
It depends on, it depends on if you go with a single panel on the side of, say, for instance, the Del Rio, or if you're including a structure. The structure can take a little bit longer in the process to design, put pylons in, cement base, whatever you choose. Those all have factors that can, can take time. Yeah, a single panel could probably be a few months.
Okay.
Anything more than that is going to-
Sixty to ninety days.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a public meeting, I'll open it for public.
I have a question. Is any of the sign solar or is it all electrical?
It's electrical.
All electrical. Okay. Thank you.
I open any for, any public comment? Say or none, we've provided direction and hasn't changed from after public comment. We'll move forward to item 6.3, identification of barriers to development at Patterson Road and Estelle Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, Donna Kenny and also Kathleen Klick will be giving this report this evening.
Well, I, I have skipped a couple meetings in the past where I didn't have items, so it's kind of all coming together now.
A PowerPoint is loading. I just wanted to mention, this is an item that council brought up again at strategic planning, to just have a discussion about one of the last large commercial properties that exists in, in Riverbank that's vacant at least, and, and some history on the barriers to development at that location.
Thank you. Okay, so in case anybody's not familiar with the location, this is Patterson across horizontally and Estelle coming down from the north. And just south of Patterson, you can see the rear-end shop there in the center of the large vacant area. Boy, these aren't coming out very good. Usually they are. So this is the parcel map and you can see five specific parcels. There is one property owner for the large parcel on the right. Then you have one owner for the rear-end shop, and then you have one owner that owns the other three parcels to the left. The parcel sizes range in size from seven and a half acres all the way down to just barely a half an acre. So the project would be about 13, 14 acres if it was one total project. Our general plan talks about putting our resources into a general plan infill area and this hatched area that you see that includes the downtown and then the commercial areas along Patterson Road are all in that infill area. The general plan designation is community commercial, anticipated to be developed for retail, employment and/or commercial services. A couple of the general plan policies that would apply to this is land use policy 1.2, which the city encourages the development of vacant and underutilized land prior to entertaining any annexation with the same need or use. Land policy 2.4 encourage the reuse of vacant or underutilized property within the infill opportunity area, and that's through more intense infill development. Policy 3.3 encourage compact development to bring residents, schools, stores and places of employment closer together, so you have the opportunity for other modes of transportation than a vehicle. And there's a couple more that talk about frequent street connections, the desire to create a Patterson Village in that area, explore opportunities for lodging establishments. This area might be great for hotel. And identify locations to accommodate professional offices as well. The zoning is general commercial C2. That does permit hotels, motels, parking lots, a lot of retail stores, second-hand stores. Just brought this up to show you that somebody coming in and developing these areas either as a whole or piecemeal, the zoning and the general plan designations are fine. They don't have to go through the process of having any of that changed. So a little bit of background that I was able to find, in 2005, there was a development plan application for an auto repair use that was submitted. But then in 2006, while preparing for a general plan, or excuse me, a planning commission meeting, we received a notification, there was a building under construction without building permits or PC approval. The city did move forward to work to abate that. And then in 2007, the city council was informed by the city manager that there was a project moving forward that included drugstores, fast food and the grocery. In 2011, the city initiated a general plan amendment to extend Estelle Avenue from Patterson down to Colony Manor. But after a few of the neighborhood folks spoke up, it was not adopted. And then currently, staff has been meeting with property owners and retailers to discuss the benefit of the city having a large development there versus smaller lot piecemeal development. And while we do have the, the rear-end shop that is seemingly in the center of everything, the property could be developed into two pieces. You would just, or even more pieces if the developer chose to break them up and sell them. It just depends on what council's preference is, something big, half as big, or smaller And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
It appears that, when was the rear-end shop built?
That would have been, my notes are 20, or 20, it started in 2007. It was when we received the, the complaint that they were building. Okay, it was, they applied in 2005 but decided not to wait for commission and started building in 2006. And so then from that point on, the city didn't take them through planning commission because the structure was already under construction. And so we abated it and moved forward to force them to get the building permits and to, I believe at the time, the fire department required a hydrant at the back of the property. And so we worked with them to get that water line and hydrant in there as well.
Had they applied through the planning commission, they would not have been able to build on Estelle itself, the proposed Estelle. If you take a look, Estelle now can't go through.
Correct.
Well, at the time, at the time, was the general plan circulation element, did it have Estelle terminating at the end of that commercial property or did it have Estelle passing the whole way through?
I wasn't able to find that.
Well, I mean, if they brought an amendment in 11 to punch it the whole way through, presumably it was not that way before, I'm guessing.
No, that's not correct. I was there in 11. We, on the council, had decided at that time that we would not allow it to punch through because the traffic for that proposed shopping center would disrupt the, the housing that's right behind it. Estelle was there, Estelle has been there. And if you take a look, Estelle's on one end, Estelle's on the other end, and there's an Estelle in the middle. But the Estelle in the middle has the rear-end shop on it. So my question to you is if, if, if the rear-end shop would have applied and not built without going through the planning commission, would they have been allowed to build on Estelle?
I personally wouldn't be able to vote, but I would believe it would have a hard time getting past the planning commission-
Okay.
-if this was a new proposal. But there is also the, the possibility of bypassing that parcel and maybe doing a cul-de-sac instead of connecting to Colony Manor as, as the name.
True as hell. Okay, yeah, but if you take a look from going east and west on the, the properties, it would be very difficult to, to go from one to the other across the Stell unless you're all the way at the southern end of that because of the triangular shape of the property.
The previous planning, they put in two gates over there by the Dollar Tree that would access the west parcels. There is a shared driveway at the east side where the storage facilities are. So in the past, there were plans for a lot of connectivity through this parcel, but it, I think, hinged on whether or not the rear-end shop was seated in the very center. I believe the realtors have, or property owners have talked to them about moving to an edge of the property or moving across the street or down the street, but they seem pretty set to stay there.
Yeah, we were talking with them at one point and they had almost purchased a two-acre portion near the Connect or the Tele Marketing-
Call Center?
Yeah. But that fell through at the last minute.
And now-
And also the problem is if we put Estelle through, then they have no connectivity to 108. And they would have to have it through Estelle.
If you came down the Stell, if the rear-end shop wasn't there and you came into this parcel and then into Col, to Colony Manor, you would take a right and go right to Oakdale Road.
There's a traffic signal there, you go right or left.
Well, no, no, I meant if you come into, if you take down the barrier and come into the neighborhood, so you're heading south and you take a right-
Oh, got, yeah.
You have connectivity to Oakdale. It's not like it would be dumped in a maze and you would have to drive through several streets to get to a collector.
Okay. Okay, what are our options?
Well, so one of the things that, there's a few options. One is that council could relook at Estelle as a circulation item as to, you know, whether or not you want to retain that policy with regard to the connectivity of that roadway. That's one.
That wasn't by resolution, by the way. It was just rejected.
Oh, oh, that's right. So it was, it was never approved. So that could be looked at for amendment. Two is Kathleen, Klick with Development Services and Donna have looked at some concepts. We actually believe, there's been sort of a misnomer out there that a project here couldn't get approved because Caltrans wouldn't allow driveway approaches on either side of this rear-end shop property, either on the northern side or, or the southern side. And, and we actually don't think that's correct. We think that there's enough linear, linear frontage there that you could get at least one and maybe even two driveway approaches. Kathleen and I discussed, in addition to that, shared access agreements with the commercial to the north of this area. So that would be the Dollar CVS parking lot and to the south, which is the storage place. So we think that worst-case scenario and, and a great, well, best-case scenario, a great project comes in, even with this impediment, we believe a project could still be made here with access. We, we think that we can get that approved. So that's one option. And the third would be to do nothing. So the primary one would be if you wanted to rethink Estelle, that would be the real discussion, because you'd have to have some discussion about right-of-way and how you would make that work and if you wanted to. Two would be, you know, look at these alternatives for development, sort of build around essentially. And three would be let the market figure it out itself, which is, which it has not done thus far.
It has not done that yet. We're going before last go sometime next year. And in that, we have to show that we are doing our due diligence with infill. So I would strongly urge we get some type of rough idea of what is going to happen to that property and get the agreements with Caltrans, get agreements with the property owners, get the agreement with rear-end shop to, for some type of solution. We, we need to do that before March, or we'll have to take other actions which we won't go into yet.
Perhaps it would be helpful if, since all parties, to my knowledge, at least during my time, probably Donna's time too, have, I don't think all parties that are owners in this little area and the city and Caltrans have ever been in the same room together. So perhaps before we bring you back, a real recommendation, we'll have that discussion and we'll see from everybody's mouth where they're at with it. That's one idea.
I thought it had been done once, but I don't, I don't think so.
Not since I've been here.
Can I get a clarification? When you're talking about Estelle going all the way through, did I get, did I hear you correctly that your desire was for it to go all the way into that neighborhood so that they can come out this way?
No, I was, going through meant from Estelle to the north of 108 into the- No, I was, going through meant from Estelle to the north of 108, into the land to the south without impediment.
That's, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Not into the neighborhood of Estelle on the other.
The southern neighborhood.
Yes.
I'm looking at it right here. So your intentions are, what you're talking about is having this come all the way through so that this is a throughway here?
To Colony Manor?
No, not to Colony Manor.
Mayor, you mean till the edge of the commercial development wherein it's bollarded and is only walkable between two?
The barricade.
Yes.
Keep the barricade, not have it come all the way through, so this opens it up, so this neighborhood gets all this traffic coming through?
No, no, no. It'll still maintain a walkable on the southern side, right, right there. That's going to be walkable, not going all the way.
Got it.
But Estelle, on our general plan, goes all the way through to there.
Okay.
Since I happen to live in the area and I'm quite familiar with it, personally, I'd like to see Estelle go all the way through eventually, we could reconnect with the street. And my reason for that is, we are going to do crossroads west, we need more bleeder streets to take the traffic away from it, so it doesn't pile up on our Oakdale and whatnot like it does now. And so that's my viewpoint, because I see it every day. That would be another bleeder street, you could take traffic out to crossroads and also bleed it off to other directions to, you know, go through that. So I personally would like to see that, because I live in the area, and we have terrific traffic jams already on our Oakdale Road. And when we do crossroads west, it will be worse.
I think you might hear something quite entirely different from some folks that live on that street right there.
I used to live on Heritage Manager, which is the next street over, and I absolutely do not want that traffic going through.
No, that's why...
There's a lot of families, there's a lot of kids, it doesn't have a direct access to Oakdale, you'd have to turn the corner and go down, no, it would be horrible.
People in here didn't buy, didn't buy those homes to live on a road like Patterson up there. You open it up through all the way there, those homes would be just like living on Patterson. And I don't think those people ever intended on buying a neighborhood home right there and have this street come all the way through so you have that traffic. So I...
Well, I think once the city was looking at it, I have to say, so I just gave my opinion, because I live in the area, okay? That's all.
I live in the neighborhood too, about four blocks away.
You live on the other side.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, all right. We're, let's get, we're not making the decision of changing the landscape of neighborhoods tonight. What we're doing is providing direction on, let's get more of a plan, what we can and cannot do, and then make a decision on what we are going to do, whether it's a bike-walking path from Estelle in Colony Manor to that proposed development. What are we going to do to the impediment on Estelle? And we have somebody going to tell us.
Oh, I just was going to ask a quick question. So we hear about Estelle, there's some options, and like we were talked about and Donna mentioned, we could, if the rear end shop wasn't there, we could have maybe a cul-de-sac there. I know there's one off of McHenry where Walmart is, there's a cul-de-sac where you can, businesses could come in and out, so you could have a development on one side, development on the other. The access that Sean talked about, where we can come in off of Patterson 108 and pull into. The issue, though, is right now, as far as having a discussion, is we don't know who's at the table and who wants to come in. So until we actually know what type of a business, if it's going to be small businesses or larger business, sitting down even with Caltrans, they're going to want to know, well, who wants to come in, what kind of access do they need, what's the impact going to be? So that's the hard, so it's, it's whether we try to do something, leaving the rear end shop and just getting access and trying to, you know, promote the other properties, or, you know, the owners promote those properties, or whether we do something with trying to continue to have the rear end shop maybe move somewhere else where we have a bigger area. So it's kind of, it's really hard to judge right now how to move forward.
Okay.
We would suggest that, I think the bottom line is we got to have sort of all parties in a room so we can give you something comprehensive. Thus far, it's been very difficult to do.
All right. This is up into the public. Come on up.
The way to get that property developed...
Your name, please.
My name is Larry Killian, I'm a real estate broker, and I represent one of the property owners.
Okay.
To the west of the rear end shop.
Okay.
We've had offers on the property. People want to develop it, but one of their conditions is that the rear end shop not be there or be part of the deal. And so far, that's not been a possibility. You have two questions here to answer. One is whether or not you put Estelle through. That's separate and apart from how you give access to a piece of commercial development property. And developers will only develop what they can rent or sell, and they have to know ahead of time. So you can't wait to see who's going in to try to work out the issue with the rear end shop at the light, because they will never make the offer to begin with. You need to make it attractive, workable, and attractive to the end user of the property and the developer of the property. So you need to be able to offer that first, before you even get to an application stage about talking to Caltrans or anything else. And another is, the entrance to the project, if the rear end shop weren't there, the light could be finished, and it would give good, open access to both sides of that. It would open up 15 acres of commercial property that so far has been stymied by that issue. The owners on both sides want to get it done, they'll cooperate with what has to be done. When the rear end shop was built, he didn't even put in curbs, gutters, sidewalks, or anything you'd normally have to do if you were developing a piece of property. I mean, that's really a non-conforming property in many ways, and it's a detriment to the future development of 15 acres of commercial property, which could be adding lots of sales tax to the city coffers.
We realize that, sir.
I understand you do. But it's two issues, going through it to Estelle, through the, into the community is one issue, giving easy access to the 15 acres is another. And the rear end shop is in the way of accomplishing that. Developers won't build around that.
Okay. Is there anyone from the rear end shop? Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, bring it back. Donna, come on back. Your statement of, "They built without permits," is disconcerting. And it was, we made the building, we did building inspection, make sure the building was right. Is there anything that we can do legal, retroactively?
Mayor, at this point, we'd have to look further into it. I'm hesitant to say yes, because so much time has passed, but we can look into it.
So perhaps what we do is we'll do that. You know, the point here is, at least from staff's perspective, is not one, one party wins and another loses. Our goal is that there's, there's a lot of opportunity here, and it feels like there's opportunity for everybody if you could find the right mix. So if you give me the opportunity, I'll put the full court press on getting all parties to the table and get a real idea about if anything is viable. If the answer is no, then I'll come back and tell you that, and then she can share what she thinks other options may be.
All right. Let's do that sooner than later. I'd like to have a solution, at least an idea of where we're moving by the time we go to LAFCO.
We, I think we could probably pull something together by January.
I'm not going to LAFCO until March.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, that makes me two months ahead of time, so that's like an A-plus, or at least an A.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
So with that being said, we get to go to Melissa. We move on to LRA item, or LRA 10-6.4, except reports on status of LRA budget for fiscal year 2018-19 first quarter.
Good evening, Chair and Authority members. The LRA is recommending that the board review and approve the first quarter budget for the period of July 1 through September 30th. This is only a snapshot of the LRA's financials as of the date of this report, and the funds associated with the LRA are Fund 197, which is leasehold, the, I went ahead too far, the revenue, administrative expenditures, and the facility expenditures are in line with the budget so far this year. And then we move on to Fund 198, which is OEA grant. This grant has moved from a quarterly reimbursement basis to a biannual basis. So the only, the second half, July through December, expenditures have not been, there's not been a cash request done yet. That will be in December when the grant expires, and then you'll have a half a year of expenditures, and then it will be reimbursed as long as it is within the budget that was approved back in January. Fund 199 is the ESCA, and at the beginning of this fiscal year, we started out with a little over $3 million with cash on hand. We were expecting to move pretty quickly through the rest of the scope of work on this project, but we've been held back by some of the agencies and particularly EPA, and just got approval in August for the concrete remediation, and now we're just moving on with that. Weston is demobilizing for the winter because they cannot work on the evaporation ponds until the spring, once that work is complete. So we'll be holding on to that balance until the work resumes next spring. The Riffin Siding Capital Improvement Project is complete as of this year. We did have one building that just had a little bit of work to finish on that. We are working on a punch list with the subcontractors, and that should be complete, and then a final payment will be issued, and that will be reflected in the next quarterly report. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Your total revenue at the beginning, I didn't say you could go. Your total revenue is going to be $345,000 and a little bit short. You're expecting 16, I was, 6.1.6 million dollars, and yet you've barely scraped $300,000 together. So that could be viewed as 1.2 million, I'm being generous. So you're going to be shy?
Are you, you're talking about the ESCA?
No, for rents, property...
Oh, for the leasehold revenue. We are actually on, we're pretty close to target on what we have, but we did lose a couple of small tenants, and we are working with PMZ right now to fill the vacancies. So we're hoping that the revenue stays in line, is that the question?
Yeah, and presumably, like, if we were able to sign a couple of new tenants to replace them at higher lease rates, we could come in above, presumably.
Okay, I'm just showing what, I'm just asking from what I see.
I mean, right now, we've, our revenue exceeds our expenditures for this quarter by 98, we'll have, we have $98,000.
Okay.
So...
And did your audit ever get accepted by the Army?
No. I don't, I don't believe so. I think we're still working through the Corps with that.
I met this nice Colonel, Ray, that I'm going to have to give a call to.
Okay. Is he in Sacramento?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, he had told me to call him anytime.
Well, definitely could use a little push.
So I need to be, I need to be briefed so I can call him anytime.
Well, we could use a little push to get that funding back in our coffers.
Okay, thank you. Is there any comments from the public on this item? Any, I'll bring it back to the council. Is there any further comments, questions, and/or action? Do we want to accept it?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this item as stated in this report.
Okay, we have a motion to accept LRA item 6.4 in a second.
Authority members, Fossey?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 7.1, staff reports, staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to remember, remind the public that there will be no second meeting this month in November. The council has canceled the 27th, which would be the fourth week of the month. So the next council, regular council meeting will be December the 11th. And then Sue has a little update on our Christmas fair. Is that what we call it, Christmas, Old Home Christmas?
No, it's the Christmas Craft Fair.
Craft Fair.
And parade. So we're going to do something a little bit differently this year. We're going to have the craft fair start at 12 o'clock, and this is November 24th, the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And then from 3:30 to 5:30, we're going to have horse-drawn carriage rides downtown. And it's going to be for a dollar per person, and we're going to have a live band and playing Christmas music and all that, and that'll lead right into the parade. So we'll have the parade, and then after the parade, we will have the tree lighting. So we're decorating the tree, hopefully this week. So we'll have all of that happen very quickly in just another week and a half.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's all for us.
All right. Going to council comments or reports, Councilmember Fossey?
No comments tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
Just like to, just like to remind everyone that Riverbank Cares' Turkey Drive is this Saturday. It'll be held in front of Leschflob's, and they're taking turkeys for donations to pass out for Thanksgiving, or they're taking money donations. So try to remember them as you're driving down the road. And also, the Historical Society is having a fundraiser at the Galaxy Theater on Thursday night. They'll be showing the movie Back to the Future 2. Tickets are available for $20 there. The money goes to the building fund, and you also get a chance to win a $100 gift certificate or $50 gift certificate just by buying the ticket, and you'll come down and have some fun. There'll be two actual dealerships there that will be on display that you could see that's just like in the movie.
Does it fly? Councilmember Jones Cruz?
The only thing I wanted to say tonight is I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. There's an awful lot to be thankful for out there each and every day, so thanks.
Vice Mayor?
We are having a Toys for Tots toy drive on this Saturday, November 17, from 9 to 4. We'll be at the Save Mark parking lot off of Oakdale Road, and we also will be accepting new toys, plus also we'll accept money Terry donations. And then we also are having a toy giveaway, which will be on Saturday, December 15, at our Codosa Middle School, and that will be from 1 to 4 in the afternoon. And I attended our Stanislaus County Disaster Council meeting of the Office of Emergency Services. We updated and proved our extreme cold and freeze plan. And just want to offer that everyone join together for prayers of the victims of the wildfires, and also happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Two items. We are in a housing shortage. We have a lot of homeless in this area. There's anywhere in between 1,700 to 2,100 in Stanislaus County, we have some here in Riverbank. It's not a county issue, it's not a city issue, it's a societal issue, it belongs to us all. Everyone has to take a look at their policies and procedures and act accordingly how we can address transitional housing, low-income housing, migrant farmworker housing, and how we can best utilize that. One of the policies I have asked LAFCO to take a look at is Policy 22, which is an ag-land mitigation. We collect a large amount of money for an ag-land conversion to development and give it to the Farmland Trust, who then in turns give it to farmers to keep their ag-land, in ag-land in perpetuity or forever. But where they're locating the ranches and farms... But where they're locating the ranches and farms that they are giving the money to are in areas that have no chance of being developed. So I've asked them to modify their ag land mitigation, continue collecting the fees, and then put it in some type of a pot to be converted into low-income housing and transitional housing. We'll find out how that is received, we'll find out next LAFCO meeting. The other thing I would like us to seriously address, I know what we plan to, is our unfunded liabilities. California has $400 billion in unfunded liabilities just in PERS. They have $1.3 trillion in underfunded liabilities in addition, and some estimate there's almost $2.3 trillion in underfunded liabilities. What that means is that at any time, this state could have a financial crisis, and we'd be swept right into it. We belong to PERS, and I believe that we should look in earnest how we could reduce our liabilities in PERS, or possibly opt out. The staff and the council need to sit down honestly and figure out how much it will cost, and find some place to protect our people who have been working for us and are currently working. Right now, for every, there's over 4 million people retired. So public people, public employees are paying right now for two retirees. That's where your retirement money goes. By 2015, you'll be doing four people in their retirement. So our retirements are going to be, costs are going to be going up per individual to pay more of the retirees that are out there. That's because we are way underfunded. A lot of it is by policy. California State Legislature says you can't deal with turkey, because they don't have the same values on LBGT community as we do. So we can't deal with them, even though there's a lot of profitability, there's also a profitability in other areas that support the Second Amendment, but the state of California doesn't believe in that. So we have to take a hard look. Do we trust the state of California, or do we take matters in our own hand and do our own retirement, whether it's another public agency which is solvent, such as Stan Sera, or we go into the private sector? But that's something that we need to discuss, and I believe that we need to discuss it at our next strategic planning openly and honestly. With that, we go to closed session, consisting of item 8.1, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, property 062-031-005 through 007. Agency negotiator, Sean Scully, City Manager, property negotiator, Ametis Inc. Item 8.2, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code 54957.6. Agency representative, Sean Scully, City Manager. Employee organization, mid-management bargaining unit. Item 8.3, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision Bravo of Government Code 54956.9, two potential cases. Anyone from the public may comment on any of the closed session items. You have a maximum of five minutes. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we adjourn to closed session.